I'd like to call the council meeting to order tonight, Tuesday, September the 16th, at 6:30 PM. If you would silence your cellphones and any other electronic devices, if you would still stand for the prayer by Councilman Fuller and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Jackson.
Let everyone compose their heart. Now Lord, in the name of Jesus, we're coming before you once again with thanksgiving in our heart. Thank you and praise your God for another day you showed that we're not promised. Now Lord, we ask that you look upon this beloved city, oh God. We ask that you bless our leaders, one by one and name by name. Help us, oh God. Give us the wisdom that we need to lead this city in the right direction. We'll praise you, we'll magnify you, we'll lift you up, for we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Time for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Fuller, and thank you, Councilman Jackson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes? Mr. Ankrison.
Yes, Mayor. We'd like to add to the presentation agenda, the Gochae Mullet Festival Committee presenting the winning artwork in 2024, and also revise the consent agenda item number seven, revise the change order for only additional contact changes. And then the third change would be add consent agenda item 14, authorization to wait for the living rental fee. George Martin, Department of Labor, to the first members of Church of Gochae. Mark in the park and blessing festival.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrison. Do we have a motion to approve the order with changes?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Fuller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jamison, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Mr. Ankrison.
Yes, Mayor. The tasting Thursday will be September 25th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former Senator Mall property. And the City of Gochae cruises through the deck incident will be Sunday, October 5th, from 12:00 PM until 5:00 PM, followed by a drive-in movie at 5:30 PM at the former Senator Mall property.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrison. That brings us to our presentation agenda. The Gochae Mullet and Music Fest is here to do a presentation of the last year's winning art winner. So if y'all would come forward, the chairman and the committee members.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. We would like to present the 34th artwork for the Gochae Mullet and Music Festival. This artwork was done by our local artist, Susan Potts. So we are very thankful for all the submissions, and hopefully everyone is following our Facebook page where we announce our 35th artwork winner, Willie D. So yeah, so.
Thank you. If the council would stand and. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. You know, we are blessed, gentlemen, Councilmen. Business agenda item number one, receive and accept the audited financial statements for the year end September 30th, 2024, and authorization to publish a synopsis of the same. That will be by our city manager, Ms. Janssens. We're blessed to have volunteers in our community.
Yes, Mayor.
Without volunteers, we would not have festivals like we have in our community.
This is your audited financial statements for 2024.
It takes volunteerism.
It is, the audit has been presented to you.
Cities do not put on festivals. So we thank you all for your tireless hard work.
This is just to reflect your acceptance of it.
We thank the artists, we thank the sponsors, and we thank the volunteers.
You don't get to approve or disapprove. Just receive it on the minute.
We also have some members with the Gochae Men's Club.
Please, at the time, consider to answer any questions you may have.
If y'all would raise your hand, they always volunteer and do the mullet, and they always They are. Thank you, Ms. Janssens. That brings us to any public, would you like to stand up and say anything? give back to the community, too. So it's a great partnership with other nonprofits that continue also along with the side of Or would y'all, or you want to introduce your team to the new council since that we Gochae Pride to make Gochae a better place to live, work, and play. got a new board and they've not met y'all yet?
I am Sandy Hinches with Wright Ward Hettinge &amp; Gill.
So we thank all of you.
Thank you. And also, this year's Mullet Festival is scheduled for October 18th.
This is Mike Gill with my firm. And for the fiscal year 2024, I just want to point out one thing that is very important
So I hope to see everyone. Please spread the word. And like I said, follow us on Facebook, so you guys can see what we up to, but the kind
for the city.
of music we bring in, so.
And if you have the audit report in front of you, it's the very last page, page 68.
Thank y'all. It'll be a great day in the city. Do you want to volunteer? Do you want to sponsor? Or just come have fun? Thank you.
For 2024, we issued what's called.
Thank you.
Right, I think I have it.
Okay. Well, I'll just go over the results of the audit. You had, for the financial statements, you had a clean, unmodified opinion. You had no material weaknesses found, no significant deficiencies, and no noncompliance material to the financial statements. Now, for the single audit, which is your federal awards, we found no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies notified. And that's with over 4.1 million in federal expenditures for the fiscal year 2024. So you have a clean, unmodified report for 2024. Anything else you would like me to address while I'm here? Otherwise, all good for 2024 audit.
Thank you, Sandy, and we thank y'all's team for coming down and preparing it for us.
Y'all look good in your outfits.
Y'all have any public comments? Do we have a motion from council to receive and accept the audited financial statements for the year ended September 30th, 2024, and authorize authorization to publish same? Motion by Councilwoman Jamison, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
That was Johnson.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jackson. I circled him, but I called the one. Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
Councilman Fuller?
No comment.
Councilman Minor?
No comment.
Councilwoman Jamison?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
I'd like to give a huge thank you to you guys for coming down and always doing such a thorough job, as well as a large thank you to our city manager, Paula Yancy, and our comptroller, Teresa Montgomery, and everybody else involved with the financials of the city and our expenditures for making sure that year after year, we have a clean bill of health. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman George. And I just echo what Councilman George says. And when I was first elected councilman, and I see Councilman College in the back, he will know we always, for several years, had one deficiency. And Teresa Montgomery and our city manager worked to get it resolved and with you all. So we're glad we have it resolved and we're at the point we are today. So we thank you for your hard work. We have a motion by Councilwoman Jamison, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries. Y'all have saved travels home. That brings us to our approval, business agenda item number two, approval of an ordinance setting the salaries to the mayor and city council by Ms. Janssens.
Yes, Mayor. This is in accordance with our budget watch session, where y'all expressed an interest in doing this. This is in accordance with what the comptroller and I, the most that we could recommend for you, so we're presenting it for your approval or disapproval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Janssens. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? If we do, come to the front, take your first and last name, and you got three minutes.
You can be mayor of council, Adam College, 8124, Meadowdale Drive, Gochae, Mississippi, 39553. It's kind of in poor taste to be asking for a 20% increase for a council that's been in session for less than three months. In that time, you passed a budget that's increased spending by almost $1.7 million, reduced the year-end balance by $430,000, and is now losing a city manager. Your budget offer for city manager is going to have to be increased probably about three times based on what you passed, because Ms. Janssens was first here. I think if you wait a year, see what the state of this city is financially within a year, then it might be more palatable for that 20% increase. Thank you.
Any other public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve an ordinance setting the salaries to the mayor and city council by Ms. Janssens?
Yes, Mayor. This is in accordance with our budget watch session, where y'all expressed an interest in doing this. This is in accordance with what the comptroller and I, the most that we could recommend for you, so we're presenting it for your approval or disapproval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Janssens. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? If we do, come to the front, take your first and last name, and you got three minutes.
You can be mayor of council, Adam College, 8124, Meadowdale Drive, Gochae, Mississippi, 39553. It's kind of in poor taste to be asking for a 20% increase for a council that's been in session for less than three months. In that time, you passed a budget that's increased spending by almost $1.7 million, reduced the year-end balance by $430,000, and is now losing a city manager. Your budget offer for city manager is going to have to be increased probably about three times based on what you passed, because Ms. Janssens was first here. I think if you wait a year, see what the state of this city is financially within a year, then it might be more palatable for that 20% increase. Thank you.
Any other public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve an ordinance setting the salaries of the mayor and city of council? Motion by Councilman Minor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuller, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Jamison?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I, now, I do kind of agree with you on that about the, because I'm not for just raising my salary, because I work for a living. I've got other ways I can make my financial work out for me. And I budget myself where I don't overspend. So I do have, because me and Councilman, well, former Councilman at large, me and him had spoken once before during the time when we was together, working together, and I do agree with him on some of this. I felt that it should be cautiously about raising us for as councilmen for pay. Because, I mean, I understand the mayor, in your position, you have things that are extra that you do, so I can agree with that. But as far as us as councilmen, I think that what we have, what we are getting now, is sufficient. So that's my take on it, and I'll just get with that.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
And I hear what you're saying, Councilman College, but as you sat on this board many years, and many years, the board over the decades, like other cities throughout the state of Mississippi, has in their ordinances, so we as a city would have never been even put in this position, because they have it built in their ordinance to build as the years go with experience and service, et cetera. But I can tell you, in our form of government compared to other cities, we are way below pay grade due to the hours you put in and all that, and the city looked at the budget and they recommended that it was feasible, because we cannot do it unless they recommend that it is feasible. So they had looked at it, the comptroller, and felt this was feasible. She did salary studies with other cities comparable to our size and felt like this was bringing us up to par with our other cities with that, in our form of government. So we have a motion by Councilman Minor, a second by Councilman Fuller, all in favor? All opposed? It was, four was Vaughn, Minor, Jamison, Fuller, and nays was Councilman George, Councilman Jackson, and Councilman Elbin. So motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, authorization FY 2026 pay adjustments as allocated and approval in the city of Gochae's FY 2026 budget. Ms. Teresa Montgomery?
This is the same order that was given our, maybe our last meeting. It's just been revised for, like, the same start date with all the authorities.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the pay adjustments as allocated and approved in the city of Gochae's FY 2026 budget? Motion by Councilwoman Jamison, a second by Councilman Fuller, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
Yeah, I just, Teresa, I want to appreciate you going out and finding the police department, their raises. I'm sure they're going to appreciate it, too. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Minor. Councilman, Councilwoman Jamison?
Yeah, I just want to say, this is well-deserved raises for the city staff. I appreciate everybody's hard work, dedication.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, and we look forward to keeping you, okay? So, that's all I have.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just once again thank all the city staff for their hard work, and definitely our comptroller, who handles the finances and makes sure the day-to-day operations. She works well with the city manager to keep things rolling and trying to make sure we're not always the highest, we're not always equal, and sometimes we're below, but one day, we'll be able to be equal or above for our city employees, and we appreciate it. We got a motion by Councilwoman Jamison, a second by Councilman Fuller, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four, approve the FY 2026 commercial insurance renewals by Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
Hopefully you read the memo that I prepared, because this is a little detailed, the business, all of our property casualty and general liability policies. If you remember in the budget workshop, I actually budgeted a lot higher in these categories, because we have had an increase in the last few years, sometimes upwards of 9%. But this year, surprisingly, our property insurance went down, so we're actually going to be under budgeted in this line item. The liability did go up, but that's basically all those claims, kind of all those claims this year, and actually the market, because liability is always, you know, based on your risk and all, they just been going up steadily. But we did good this year. Basically, we had a good insurance year.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve the renewal of commercial insurance policies to Hub International for property casualty and liability insurance coverage for FY 2026? Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Elbin? Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman, Councilwoman Jamison?
Yeah, on the inspection fee from, the last premium was $750, and now it's increased to $4,700? What is the last page that?
The top section.
Premium summary, the top section?
Those are fees that were set by the insurance companies. We don't have any saying of that. So that is actually an added fee, just for them to inspect them. Even though the fee, the total fee went down, that inspection fee is added.
So it's for them to inspect an insurance claim?
They go out and inspect the, these are the wells, this is the infrastructure, the wells and the treatment plant, they go out and look at them before they insure them. They inspect them every year. They do the property and the buildings like every couple of years, but this is the first year that they've actually inspected these, I think, because that's the initial year.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Just to clarify that, to make it make sense in layman's terms, more than likely what happened is Hub International went out and shopped to the market for a different policy. The prior carrier either charged too little or did not do an inspection every single year. This year is a new carrier, it's done by a third party. This is what their fee is. It's nonnegotiable. But that's probably what happened, is we have a new property carrier, and that is what their inspection company charges.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman George. Any other comment? We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Elbin, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, approve renewal of a self-funded employee health insurance plan FY 2026 by Ms. Teresa Montgomery, our city clerk.
If you pledge your move, I'm not recommending any changes to the premiums at this time, but we did not have a good year as far as the health plan. We had several people going into stop laws. We have a couple more people right on the edge of stop laws right now. The claims continue to be paid for this plan year, probably through the end of this calendar year. So until that all settles, we're not sure where that's going to stand, but so that's why I advise looking at it again in six months, and we may have to address premium increases. But right now, we've got a pretty decent cash balance, and the claims have slowed up, but we have a couple high-dollar pharmaceutical costs, so.
Okay. Any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion to approve the renew the self-funded health insurance plan for FY 2026? Motion by Councilman Fuller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Jamison?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman Fuller, a second by Councilman Minor, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six, consider a request for a five-foot variance to minimum lot width requirements in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at Martin Bluff Road, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-38-VAR, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankrison.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Planning Department has received this request from David Pinson, doing business as the AP Enterprises LLC. The application fee of $175 is paid on August 15th, 2025, and all public notice requirements are met. Background, the applicant would like to subdivide the subject property, which is shown in the maps provided in your package, into four lots that would be 75-foot wide by 220-foot deep. Unified development ordinance requires that lots in the R1 low-density residential district be 80-foot in width. Therefore, the applicant is asking for a five-foot variance to minimum lot width requirements in the R1 district. I will say also, the ordinance requires lots in the R1 to 9,600 square feet minimum, due to the fact that these lots would still be 225-foot deep and would still well exceed the lot area required, if this award is granted. The planning commission recommends approval of the variance. If the evidence presented is meeting the criteria for approval from UDO's business, the city council may approve the variant request is presented, approve the variant request of changes, or deny the variant request, considering I've included the application for review, and if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them, once the applicant turns around.
Thank you. Have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion by council to approve the planning commission's recommendation for a five-foot variance to a minimum lot width requirements in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at Martin Bluff Road, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-38-VAR, PID number 85433002.000. Motion by Councilman Minor, second by Councilwoman Jamison, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Jamison?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We got a motion by Councilman Minor, second by Councilwoman Jamison, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, consideration for a property owner-initiated rezoning property from R1 low-density, single-family residential to planned unit development PUD, and approval of the presented PUD plan located on Old Spanish Trail, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-36-RZ, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankrison.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Sean Peterson, doing business at Focus Construction. The application fee of $300 is paid on July 15th, 2025, and all public notice requirements are met. Included some background on this property, as y'all know, it has been previously, very previously approved PUD in the immediate area. This lot, as you see by your maps, is on Old Spanish Trail. The current zoning is R1, as said, the existing land use is vacant. The future land use is, has called out in our plan as very low-density residential, and the surrounding zoning is R1 low-density, single-family residential to the north and west, and the PUD planned unit development to the south and east. The planning commission, after hearing this, recommends the city council approve the PUD with the following stipulations. One, a five-foot barrier on the east and west side, reducing the lot depth approximately 130 in depth. Two, a five-foot barrier on Old Spanish Trail side. Three, that the applicant establish an HOA for this PUD floor, a green space at the entrance we provided, and five, the total square footage to reflect the depth change of each lot. The city council may approve the rezon, parcel ID number 82438100130, from R1 low-density, single-family residential to PUD planned unit development, and the attached PUD plan, or deny the rezon. Again, included the minutes entered and the application for your review. If you have any questions, just keep us on the list of cases.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrison. Any public comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion by council to approve the planning commission's recommendation for a property owner-initiated rezoning of property from a R1 low-density, single-family residential to a PUD planned urban unit development, and approval of the presented PUD plan located on Old Spanish Trail, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number 25-36-RZ, PID number 82438100130, with the following stipulations. Five-foot barrier on the east and west side, reducing lot depth to approximately 130 in depth. A second, a five-foot barrier on Old Spanish Trail side. Third, establish an HOA. And four, a green space at the entrance. And five, the total square footage to reflect the depth change. Motion by Councilman Minor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuller, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
No discussion.
Councilwoman Jamison?
Yeah, I just want to mention again, I mentioned it on the last PUD that we approved, but a lot of the citizens, I was on the planning commission when we approved the other one, and a lot of citizens voiced concerns about the increase in traffic on Old Spanish Trail. We need to really consider that as far as for future widening of that road. Don't know if it's, it would probably be a county responsibility to widen it, I would say, and it's very costly, but we need to consider that, because that was a big concern to citizens. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jamison. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Thank you for your investment, Gochae.
We got a motion by Councilman Minor, a second by Councilman Fuller, all in favor? Motion carries. We thank you for your investment here and wish you the best in the new subdivision. More homes, more economic development. That brings us to business agenda item number eight, approval of the docket of claims. We've been presented the docket of claims by Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk. They've been provided to the citizens online and the council and citizens for review. Do we have any public comments on the business agenda item number eight? None? Do we have a motion by council to approve the docket of claims, provided their entries there on are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent? Motion by Councilman Fuller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Fuller?
No discussion.
Councilman Minor?
No discussion.
Good, he's learning, he's reading it good, I'm proud of you. Councilwoman Jamison? Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman Fuller, second by Councilman Minor. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're all approved in one motion unless somebody would like to remove one. Is anybody wanting to remove any of the consent items?
Yes, I'd like to pull eight.
Pull eight?
Five, six, two. Nine, ten, fourteen.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item one through four, seven, and nine through fourteen?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Jamison, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent item number five. Authorization to remove broken furniture and equipment from the city of Gochee's inventory. Ms. Montgomery? You want me, who pulled it, who has the question?
I do.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Chief on this fire truck, engine one, we using that today? Engine one on the engine pumper truck, the fire truck.
That's the one they're getting rid of?
I'm assuming, you don't know nothing about it?
It's the 1999.
1999 engine, E1, engine one?
No, that's E1, that's what the brand did.
Oh, is there, I mean, is there something wrong with this truck, or?
Yeah, that's what we're getting rid of.
Is there something wrong with it, or?
The brand has rusted out a little bit, it's fallen apart. Like if we, if we hit the road and drive slow too fast, it just wouldn't happen.
I mean, we're using it today, though, huh?
It's, if we have to get to it, we need to, it's a carry-on. We have the other truck on Friday.
Yes, sir.
For the place.
Yeah, I knew we was getting that new one. Is it supposed to arrive Friday? Alright, well, I'd rather maybe try to look at saving some of the stuff or we just get rid of it.
I mean, it would cost a lot to get it, I mean, you'd have to take it down to the fire, you'd have to rip out the frame.
So is there anything off this truck you can use?
Everything that we can use, we'll take, we'll take off of it.
Okay.
And put it on the new other trucks.
I don't have a tablet till we get everything off.
I think this is how, they take everything. Teresa, can you explain to the new council because they don't understand how this works? Right.
Each department sends in, sends the list of what they have that's unusable, broken, that can't be repaired, they send it to us and then we remove it from inventory. If it can be scrapped, we sell it. If it is good enough to be sold to someone else, we send it to auction. If it's trash, we trash it. That's, that's basically the way it goes. Most vehicles, if you see, the vehicles don't just run off the lot, just walk through that gate. There's, we've got a whole slew of them. Everything that can be taken off is reused on new vehicles. Especially that comes from these cars. They strip anything that they can reuse. These bumpers and stuff that you sell here, they are mangled and will just have to be scrapped.
And we have to follow the state procurement laws to be able to do all that. You gotta process that, you gotta do. That's why some of it can be scrapped, that's why some of it has to go to auction because the city cannot sell it directly.
Or donate it.
This is probably not the best way to list the stuff, but.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Montgomery. We appreciate your answer and explanation. Any other, so do we have a motion for authorization to remove the broken furniture and equipment from the city of Gochee's inventory?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Jamison, do we, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion?
I had one person question me today of reference to our computers. Before we scrap them, are the hard drives pulled?
The computer destroyed?
They are.
My department, they are for sure.
I'm not sure about the ones here.
There's sensitive information on them.
My, my last computer is still sitting in my office and hasn't, it's a blast in the office.
Yes, because that. Who, who would be able to answer that? Because I know the sensitive information that we have going out, I just don't know who. I know we have had auctions in the past. Does that information destroy before it goes out?
I'll, I'll give it to AGJ and find out what they're doing. Because they're the ones that switch over the computer and then they bring them to us. So I'll make, I'll see their kind of security protocol that they're using.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I would assume they're wiping them clean because we have a pretty strict contract with AGJ that makes sure they, we're in security firewall and everything, so I would assume they're handling it. But will, when y'all verify, will you send an email to the board updating them?
So, so do we need to, so do we need to scrap them before we can verify if it's been taken out? Because we don't want all.
They're just sitting in the back.
She, Teresa and them, they're not going nowhere tonight. They'll verify and make sure everything's off of them before they send them.
They can't just go by the computers. You have to, we have to actually pay someone to destroy them.
Okay.
To find someone to destroy.
Because you can't just throw electronics in the garbage.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I don't want, I'll, I'll. Important information wound up in the wrong hand, that's why I asked the question.
Okay.
I'm just, you know.
That's all I have.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Jamison, a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number six. Authorization to advertise for bids for the Gochee Water and Sewer Improvement, Section 592 Chemical Building Water Line Replacement Project by Ms. Yancy. Is there any specific question somebody has that, Councilman Minor, you pulled it?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that I think we might need to wait to send this out for bids so we can get, if we get a new city manager, they can be involved in it.
Well, I don't think we should hold it up because we're going out for bid, we won't be. I think we have some deadline requirements with the Army Corps. But Ms. Yancy, you wanna answer that?
Yes, this is paid for with 592 funds. You've already submitted your projects, they've already been approved by the Corps of Engineers. This is the first one. Your pipes over there and your existing treatment plant are copper. And because of that, they need replacing. They probably shouldn't have been copper to begin with. So this is to keep your existing treatment plant running. So it's already paid for, you gotta grant this 592, and it's already been approved by 592.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Any other questions? Councilman Minor, I understand maybe you're concerned, but it would be during, the bids wouldn't come in until after. And it'd be coming in in October, so. And this is all through the Army Corps, so I would suggest that we consider moving forward and not holding up the project if we don't get them replaced. Or the bids, we don't have to accept the bids, this is just going out for bids. We have a consent agenda item number six. Authorization to advertise for bids for Gochee Water and Sewer Improvement, Section 592 Chemical Building Water Line Replacement Project. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number eight. Authorization to submit an application to MDOT for Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Grant for the Town Commons Park Sidewalk Project. You pull it, Councilwoman Jamison, do you have a specific question?
Yeah, I just had a question, I guess for Paula. So is this, what is this, sidewalks? Or what do they call transportation alternatives? I mean, what it, what?
Well, this act, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all, go ahead.
Well, this actually was part of your GCRF application last year. As you note, well, it has been for the last two years. And the legislature gave nobody any GCRF funding. So we're applying everywhere we can because this actually put sidewalks on, I wonder if, I don't know, I guess that would be what, North Dolphin? And to make it more walkable for the sound. So we're just trying to apply for funding just to make sure that if we don't get one, we get the other. And so this grant came up and so we just, we're gonna put this in just to try and cover our bases.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy.
Thank you.
We have any other comments from council, questions? Do we have a motion to authorize them to submit an application to MDOT for a Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Grant for the Town Commons Park Sidewalk Project?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Fuller, second by Councilwoman Jamison. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next brings us to our citizen comments. You come to the front, states your first and last name, and you have three minutes. So the only one that has signed in to speak is Gochee Men's Club. And they can all stand, y'all can all come to the front, y'all have, because y'all got great news to tell our city employees, and the firefighters just left. Somebody should open the door. Tell them, don't leave.
Eliminate them. I'm Bob Langdon, on the executive committee of the Gochee Men's Club. And we try to do a lot of good things for the community and try not to get recognized. So we thought in the, at the mullet festival this year, we would feed, be. I see a police officer. Remember, look at me. We would feed the, to the first responders for the city of Gochee. Them, we're not capable of feeding their families. But if you'll come by the tent with me, we're happy to let you have a mullet plate on us in our appreciation of all the things that the city does for us, whether it be the mullet festival or our parade, our Mardi Gras parade. We know we couldn't be as successful with you than that, both fire and police and the ambulance sitting there for the idiots to do something stupid. Thank you again, we appreciate everything y'all do.
Well, we thank y'all. And the two chiefs are here, they heard it, our firefighters left already. But we will make sure that our city manager and the chiefs and the clerk get your invitation out to all of our public safety that works for the city. And we appreciate all your hard work, kindness, volunteerism, and support of all of Gochee.
Well, we thank you. We thank you for your.
Let's give the Men's Club a round of applause. Okay. Next is city council man, city council comments. Next, it's the second meet of the month, so we have Councilman Alvin.
Ms. Ramona and H2 Michael, I had a request today about a tree that's falling down on the far east side of Hastings. Apparently it's been hit by lightning and parts of it are overhanging over the road. Is there any way we can send a crew maybe take a look at that?
They already, they already have it, Councilman.
Oh, they do they?
Alvin, they already, it was reported and they've already got it, looking into it.
Okay. Other than that, I'd just like to thank all the employees of our city and also our contract partners for what you do each and every day to make our city move forward. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Fuller?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city staff as well. I know a lot of times we don't say we appreciate you, but we really do. I know sometimes we give y'all a hard time about different things and budgets. I know we break people's over the cold, but at the end of the day, I'm a stickler for safety. So I think we should put that at the top of our agenda all the time. So I appreciate you, Ms. Teresa, going and doing what you're doing. Getting everything situated and getting these things passed, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Fuller? Councilwoman Jamison?
Yeah, I just wanna, went to the youth football event Saturday, opening ceremonies, and it was amazing, thank you, Chastity. It was very well-rounded, it was a beautiful day, started out, you said it smelled like money that morning? So Casey said.
It did smell like money was flowing.
But it was a great event, there was a big turnout of, of the.
It was very lively, wasn't it?
Of parents and, and, oh, I appreciate that. And I just wanna thank Paula for everything she's done for the city. And, you know, it's been, already been publicized that she's leaving the city on the 30th. And I just wanna thank her for everything she's done. And she's left us with a terrific staff to keep up her good work. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Jamison. That brings us to Councilman Jackson.
Yes, sir. I echo on her thanks to all the work that she has done over the past to help the city to get established as well, well, to get balancing this budget and things like that along with Teresa as well. Yeah, and so I wanna also speak on that, what you said about the football games. Of course, that was at the top of my agenda to speak on because Chastity did an excellent job. When I say it was a crowd, it was like old Baycott, you know, where the cars were all up the street and families were all over the place in, in Baycott. So it was good to see that. It felt like Baycott's back now, you know, where it used to be. And with an improved face on it, you know? So, and that's pretty much what the community was seeing, wanted to back anyway. And now we got it, and thanks to your hard work and what you have done, we had a blast to see that. I mean, it was amazing to see such, so many cars, so many families and people coming to Baycott. And, and with the improvement, the safety, the, the community felt safe. People felt good about it and their attitudes were better, much better, you know? Normally at a football game, they get rowdy, you know? Chastity didn't know that, she's seen it many a times in this particular time, man. It was just, it was like family. And I just wanna thank you for your hard work. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
I'm gonna echo our comments about Paula Yancy. It is a very somber, sad situation for her to leave us, but I know she's on to better things and all good things must come to an end. It's been kinda hard to process this change that we're about to go through. But as I looked around the room tonight at our first council meeting after the announcement, and knowing that this is our last council meeting, I rest easy knowing that we have a lot of great staff that have worked with Paula for many years. You're all very capable, very rounded, very smart. And I know that we will go through this next season of Gochee with a lot of success like we've been for the last 10 years. So I wanna say thank you and I look forward to continuing what we have. As far as Gochee Men's Club and our mullet fest committee, I don't think the general public realizes the type of effect that you have on our community. Your organization and your volunteerism is a pillar, brings people together. It shows what we're capable of here in Gochee, your charity, your dedication, your sacrifice. It means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the people in Gochee who look to you for resources and for socialism and everything. So thank you for all that you do and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman George. You know, I just wanna echo what the whole board has said. It's not been easy past couple of weeks. Ms. Yancy, that's where I wanna start at first. She's attending by phone this evening because she's with her family, but you know, Paula, your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Her selfish, she has been in a position where she's put her family last for this city. If the residents and citizens. city, if the residents and citizens don't know that. Um, she's put the citizens of Gochet, our businesses, our employees, number one, over her family sometimes, and, you know, it puts, as you're a leader, as she was, um, it, you know, it hurts, um, when you're making a change like this, you hate leaving your family, um, and especially ones that you've worked so hard with to get where we were today. When we hired Ms. Yancey nine years ago, almost 10, we literally, she, we were a sinking ship. Councilman College is in the back, he was on the council with me. It wasn't a hard decision when we hired her, she was overqualified, really, to be city manager, in my opinion, and, um, I was ever so grateful for former city manager Kate Kell and Pascagoula recommended her, um, to be interim, she accepted it with no intention to apply full-time. We begged her to apply full-time with other candidates, and she did, and we awarded her the job, and she has worked hard every since she has been here. We've received more in state funding than we have since City Incorporated, we've received more in federal funding since the City Incorporated, we've had longer employee retention since the City Incorporated, um, throughout different city managers, and she has been the longest serving city manager for the City of Gochet. So, um, we thank you, Ms. Yancey, for your hard work and dedication. You will, um, definitely be missed, but you're not going nowhere, you're still here in Jackson County, and you are still big champion, as I know, for Gochet, and we're just ever so grateful and blessed for all your hard work. Ms. Yancey, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, just making sure you heard us off.
No, I did, thank you.
Okay. Um, and next, you know, as we heard about Baycott Park, I just want to thank, um, our recreation department and, um, public safety was out there, and our parents. Um, Baycott Park, I echo what everybody says, but if you had not been to Baycott Park to see old faces that have children my age that was there for their grandchildren, to say where we are today with Baycott Park and them to be so proud and boast about it, makes you feel, um, exciting and thankful and blessed to see we took a belated park and turned it around. To have a parking problem, um, and people were hesitant, thinking we didn't need extra parking down there, well, they're totally incorrect, because there was parking, people parked all the way down in the residential neighborhood, on lots across the road. Um, our guests from Pascagoula and other areas were boasting how nice our park was, the tailgating going on with the youth to show them pre-homecoming festivities for this week, um, just was exciting to be there. Our city's tough, I thank all you for your hard work, I know every day's not easy, but y'all keep the, um, train, um, bus, and the sale of sailings, so we thank y'all. As we heard, um, our volunteers with the mullet festival, Gochet Men's Club, we thank y'all, encourage y'all to participate, um, with them. Homecoming week, we got a lot of festivities going on, um, Gochet Alumni, um, I appreciate the city staff working with Alumni Association to organize our community tailgate, I thank the alumni for hosting it. I can tell you, we expect everybody to have clean homecoming fun, so let's please, um, all just follow the rules, and so we can continue to have events like this, please remember to support our youth. If you're a parent, please encourage your, um, children to have clean homecoming fun, so our police are not, um, having to do extra calls, police and homecoming when they might have a more, um, critical emergency that they need to respond to. So, um, let's remind our youth what clean home, fun, homecoming fun is all about. Y'all enjoy the parade, if you don't know, on Wednesday, um, I know it will be great, road closure will be posted by our police department, um, and then Thursday, the alumni will have a meet and greet at the convention center, and that will be fun. Homecoming tailgate on Friday, homecoming game on Friday evening, the court, so, um, we wish you all a blessed homecoming. I will regret and miss all of you, but I will be, um, watching from afar, because I will be traveling to be with my family due to the death of my uncle yesterday morning. So I ask that you pray for my family. That being said, we go next to our city manager, do you have any, um, comments, Ms. Yancey?
I'll cry. I just want to say, the employees of this city have been like my second family, and y'all have really, y'all don't know this, but when I walk in every morning and I see Val's smiling face, all y'all talk to each other all during the day, I just love everyone of y'all, and I'm going to miss you greatly.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. That brings us to city clerk comments, you got any comments? Ms. Montgomery?
No.
That brings us to city attorney comments, Mr. Danos?
Yes, sir. I distributed a revised resolution for approval for closure of roads and traffic measures for the homecoming tailgate. I think I've discussed it with everybody, we have any questions, I can add, but we need to manage the timeframe of the roads to be closed.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the amended resolution approving the closure of roads and traffic control measures as described in the application submitted by the Gochet High School Alumni Association for Homecoming Tailgating Event?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Fuller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Danos, for that.
I also ask that we go into closed session, it's going to be for executive.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if we can go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fuller, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We're in closed session, um, citizens, we ask that you stop, so the foyer and the city attorney will...